And I have a quick agenda check. Hey, good to go. All right, then, I will do the facility safety awareness logistics briefing. Okay, there's only, basically, the exits are through here, there, and the restrooms are through there. So it's mostly for your benefit. In case of an emergency, we go out the glass door at the back of the room. An alternate emergency, the alternate emergency exit is there, and we follow SAB's instructions if there was any other problems to go on, and you have virtual participants. So the meeting room will be muted during the break aside, oh, there's no break today. Virtual participants on screen as public content will be getting secure conversations in the room. As we are being called. Okay. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Morgan Monroe and Megan O'Connor and let you run the meeting.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Thank you for inviting us this evening. My name's Megan O'Connor. I am privileged to be Morgan Monroe's partner in Hathaway Monroe Organizational Development and Strategy. We have been in business for, we just completed our sixth year in business. We survived the pandemic, and we, how we do business has changed since it started. In the beginning, we thought we would do classes for both. And what we've ended up doing is a lot more change management, a lot more strategic management training with executives. And it's about adult learning. That's, that's what we do. We work with adults. Change is hard, and so there's a niche for us in the market because we help work through that. A little bit of background, I'm a born and raised Oregonian. I'm a fourth generation Oregonian. Oregon is a born and raised Oregonian. So we're familiar with Oregon's bounty and perfect house. And so we're going to kind of talk a little bit about some of those tonight. So to get started, your agenda pretty much, you have a notebook. You probably won't need anything else because it isn't too elaborate this evening. The first element is to remind folks about how people learn. And as I said, learning is hard, and stages of learning do not come overnight. When you're small, you learn through all kinds of things all the time with lots of inputs. And we get older, our brains and our bodies and our minds and our experiences bring us down to more refined ways of learning. There's unconscious incompetence. We don't know what we don't know. There's conscious incompetence. It's like, oh, gosh, we don't know that. Let's learn it. There's conscious confidence. We can do work if we think about it. And then there comes a time where we just do it without thinking about it. I would guess most of you got to experience that driving here tonight because at one time you didn't know how to drive, and you probably didn't think about driving to this meeting tonight. Reason I bring this up is because the work that we're going to start to do and some of the things that we're going to talk about this evening do not fall into number four for any of us, for any number of reasons. They probably fall into one and two. We probably, I need to address that I don't know what I don't know. And I don't know, although I'm here to teach this subject and to help you learn it, there's a great deal I don't know, and I don't pretend to know, and I continue to study and to learn and to be open to what's available to learn about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Because it changes every day. We'll talk a little bit more about that later, but in your packet, there's a terminology notebook that was not current the moment it came off the printer. It's changed since it was printed, and that will continue. I do have some conscious incompetence now. I realize there's a lot I don't know, and there's a lot I can learn. There's a lot I can learn from you, and there's a lot I learn every time we walk through this topic. So the glossary of terms, we'll go through it a little bit. But this is, this is work in social change, and the trends have been around for a long time. Some of us are a little long in the tooth. And I really, as I look back on this, started some of this work, really. But we won't take a deep dive into that. But that's when I begin to look at some of the changes in Oregon and across the nation and how this kind of work affects us. And so that kind of kicks off where we are. There are some underlying assumptions for this training. They're written down on page two. I won't read them to you. You're all quite capable of reading them. But I think that I continue to go back to them because there is in those statements, and I have to go back and remember that those are true. That those are the assumptions that I need to have every time I stand up to talk about this subject, to talk in front of a group of people, and to help work through some of the emotional and mental issues that deal with strategic change, and it is strategic change. It comes with policies, plans, and actions around making a workplace that is open, welcoming, diverse, equitable, inclusive, and gives a sense of belonging. UW has been known for decades as an employer of choice in Lang County. To keep that reputation, some of this work has to be done. What a fun meeting.
And so I think that's a piece to recognize that what also this is, is ongoing work, right? This is stuff UW has been doing for decades. The words might have changed a little bit. Some of the frames might have changed a little bit. But trying to figure out how to be a great place to work, trying to figure out how do you serve this community is what UW has been doing for a very long time. And so I think that's some of the pieces. When we think about some of the DEI stuff, there can be a real temptation for someone to want to say, this is all brand new. This isn't all brand new. This is continuing those chapters of how we do this and how we work with each other. And how we keep getting better at it. Now we keep understanding that there's areas, oh, we could do better here. We could do better over here, right? And that's a big piece of it. And so we wanted to make sure to highlight that fact because you all have been part of things that I know you've seen them in various board packets along the way, years of work that UW has been doing on this. And so one of the things I want to do is take an opportunity to go around and have introductions. You all know yourselves sort of enough, right? But let us know who you are. And also, if there's something you have a specific question about or something you're hoping we get to in the training, we also. So, yes, we love a whiteboard. What is the number with the whiteboard to get written on? And so can I start with you, Madam, if you would introduce yourself and let us know if there's a specific topic or question we want to make sure we touch on today? Okay, I'm Sonya Carlson, UW president for 67, and I'm a resident. I'm just open to the process. So I know I will have questions, but I'm going to keep them online and see what gets answered. Great, thank you.
And great, also on the board, and I don't know how specific things I'm hoping to get to.
John Brown, and I have several questions. Do I do things for a reason, or try to? And I assume that we're doing this because there's something we should be doing that we're not doing. And who's identified that, and when did they do it, and what's their qualification to do it? And the second question I have, it's a broad range, but things about determining, am I white? If I am, what are the bases for you making that statement? I need to understand the determination of how you identify somebody in that race. I mean, is it skin color? Is it heritage? I mean, what is it? And we talk about historically marginalized communities makes that call. And is that based just on UW's perspective or community perspective? So I've got a lot of questions. I really think this is important to do, but I just want to understand our role. So, thank you.
I'm John Borowski. I'm also a commissioner. I guess one of the questions that I would have is, I think that I'm looking at this exercise on a couple of different levels. On a personal level, learning it growing. But then I also want to know how myself, as a policy setter, implement that into an organization. I think that that's probably different than, than, let's say, Frank or Rod, who has to enforce a, or not enforce a policy, but if, you know, make the policy live within the organization. We set the policy. I'm not making sure that the policy is living. So I guess learning how other policy or boards go through this process and give that direction to, to the people who have to implement it.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hale. I am staff here at UW. My role is as the kind of policy analyst and advisor. And I'm here because I'll be supporting some of the implementation of this work. So I'm excited to hear the conversation, and I don't have any specific questions tonight.
Good evening. I'm Frank Lawson, the general manager. I report collectively to the board, and I think part of my interest in this process is to determine how the oversight occurs in this area and how that is best captured in policy, which can be implemented through my role and others within the organization.
I'm Mindy Schlossberg, and I'm also a board member. And some questions that I have are, I'm curious how we can, how we will be able to apply some of the things that we learn to how we function as a board. So at the board level, how can we implement some of these things that we're going to be moving about? And also, I have confidence that whatever policy we set, the organization is really good at following it. But what, really, what is our role as a board, and how do we make sure that policies get implemented, but also that we're well informed and not to be the ones to say whether or not it's getting, they're getting implemented? And then the last thing is something that I'm looking forward to with this tonight is that we're all learning together about this, and I know that everybody's kind of on a different page or comes from a different place, and I think that it's really valuable to have everybody together learning this way.
My name's Rod Price. I'm the assistant general manager. And kind of similar to Frank and Commissioner Borowski's comments, I'm interested in sort of, how do we, and I kind of like what you said, how do we serve the community and make this a great place to work? We remain relevant in today's society and culture. Live in the past, murder in the past. So we need to have people prepared to make all that happen. And so how do we best set ourselves up to meet the challenges?
Yes, please. I'm curious, the person who's online is that? Any other, those other pieces? Thank you. Where, I love this list because many of them are part of the training already, which feels great as someone who put help with the agenda together. And so we'll come through most of these. Some of these may end up things where we say, that's a thing, we'll follow up with that in that space. This is a public meeting, which means we want to make sure that we aren't having some conversations, which as a facilitator, I love small group discussions, is something that I'm feeling my way through. And so we're going to have group discussions with a lot of these topics. And I really appreciate folks' willingness, willingness to ask the questions that are online, willingness to be here and learn together. I think you have a really important job in front of you with this policy. And for a lot of places, it's a new policy, and it's a new way to do these things for UW. And so the fact that you're sitting out here saying, how do we do it really well? I think is a really important question. And what's bringing us to this is a really important question. So I'm really excited that those are pieces that are on your mind. If, as people, as we go through, if you do have questions, you can raise your hand. If people are all talking at once, we'll figure it out. But if anybody else has anything, or we move on to the next. I want to just do that pause and get in with that. Great. So words matter, right? I know this work, words matter, and also in this work, words are key, being created. And so on page two, we start looking at some of those words and some of that meaning with purpose also. Why does this work matter, and why are folks doing it? And I think some of those words are particularly shifting because of the top number one on page two, we're getting better at recognizing some of the whole person. We're getting better at recognizing and seeing the whole person. And also, society is increasingly amenable to the fact that people are getting to bring themselves to work or into life or into society without having, I think there was a pretty narrow band of what was acceptable, you know, 20 years ago, 50 years ago, 100 years ago. And society's opened its mind a little bit to that. And so we're increasingly widening that space to be able to say, you know, that's something you can do yourself in that space in this way, and that's okay. And that's a pretty big shift, and it's gone relatively rapidly in the scale of human history, how quickly that has shifted in some cases. And that's also where the language comes in. And so that's something to keep in mind because it really can create not just new language and the volume of new words for people that are joined the lexicon, but also the complexity of what those terms mean and the nuance between different terms. And that can be a space that causes a lot of stress for people who's trying to figure out, here's what I think I mean, and I'm trying to convey this with full politeness. And I'm also concerned that perhaps my term is 20 years out of date and how is someone going to take it? Right? And so that's something that I think a lot of people wonder about and work through, and we'll talk some more about that. When I think about the terms that my grandparents used out of full politeness, that, you know, when I would hear them as a kid, being like, I don't think we use those words anymore. Right? Like, I kind of hope society keeps advancing so that my grandkids someday get to say to me, Grandma, I don't think we say those words anymore. We have these new better words, right? And may language be alive in that way. I think that would be really exciting. And so that's a space. And I think here, particularly as we're going through this, is an opportunity, if you've got that question, ask it. If you want to ask Megan or later and say, hey, particularly this space, what, here's what I might have said. What could I say today, right? How could that go over? We're very happy to help with it. And then number two for that is really trying to help make society more fair, right? And so we start getting into some of these definitions and how they get applied. When you start thinking about diversity or justice or equity or inclusion. If you turn to page three, we have some incredibly short definitions. There are many places in the world that have very long definitions for this. For the purpose of today and for tonight, right, we're hoping that these will suffice. And so it's that space of thinking about what might diversity mean or equity mean or inclusion mean? And then what, how do they interplay with each other? And at the bottom of page three, you can see that space where diversity asks something, and then equity answers in a response, sort of an app call and response phrase to help people see how those words can interact with each other and what that can mean and what they. Does anybody have any questions about those terms? Anything else as you take a moment and absorb that?
I think part of this, when we say the reason for the work, comes back to exactly what's here. In, I did a demographics check today, and we had in the 40s, in the 30s, 40s, and 50s, such a homogeneous demographic that language around work and ethos didn't change much. The change and, and numbers in other spaces in those places didn't change much. For example, approximately 90% of the population of the United States in those three decades, not above 89.8% was white. The 2020 census says it's 61%. That's a big difference. And how people identify themselves today is quite different. There are more spaces where we were identified in the 2020 census. And as Morgan said, bringing your whole self to work today is certainly not something I did. It wasn't safe. I wouldn't have done it, and I couldn't. I experienced things that are now illegal all through my work life. I did payroll and was paid less than half of what a man doing the exact same job that I was doing was paid. That wouldn't happen today. So things have changed. And I think the point is, the reason for this work is because we started this process a long time ago when we began to look at this work. And changes have happened. They continue to happen. And I think the necessity here is to identify the need for the change because if we, if we don't change, we die. We die as a community. We die as a society. And we die as a people who are wanting to bring the best to a community and to one another. UW provides the most essential services that a first world country provides. Clean water, power on demand, and a sense of community where you know that you can rely on clean water and power on demand. Those are, those are first world issues. I lived in the third world for a while, believe me. I never look at a washing machine without being very grateful. But again, those are the changes that have come along and the changes that I've experienced. So this isn't new work. It's work we've been doing all along, and we need to step in. To step into this going forward is so we continue to have a viable, engaged, thoughtful, committed workforce.
And so as we think about diversity and you think about inclusion, there's different ways for those words to be grouped. Like there's state, the state has protected classes regarding employment law. Federal government has protected classes. When you're looking at discrimination, when you're looking at toxic workplaces, when you're looking at bullying, right? There's some governmental definitions. Some of that's different categories. And on page four, we have a totally non-governmental list of a ton of different, that can really impact somebody's identity. They can describe somebody's identity. They can describe somebody's experience. This list, we keep adding to because we keep finding more of the ones that we don't have. But really, it's part of what we're hoping to represent with this is to show that there are going to be aspects of this list for somebody that are really, really important to how they view the world, how they've experienced the world, and to what it's like for them when they show up to work, when they show up to a meeting, when they go to the grocery store, when they need to pay a bill, right? And often, those aspects are beyond some of those governmental categories. And so that's part of why we put this list forward, and we would ask you to help us add to this list if there are things we're missing. If there's terms on this list that you're like, what does that one mean? We'd love to answer that question, best we can. So take a look at it. As you look down this list, either does something jump out at you? Do you have things that folks or categories you'd love to see included in different ways?
I'm unfamiliar with neurodiversity.
So it's a term that's growing in acceptance and use, and it comes, it sort of came, I don't know if originally is the right word, but I've jumped, I heard of it more and more from folks who are sort of in the autism spectrum space, and it has grown to really include other aspects of cognitive difference. So ADD, ADHD, dyscalculia, dysgraphia, dyslexia. And so it's really in that how people cognate and how you bring information in, which I would say is different often from cognitive abilities, which is sort of IQ and intelligence level often is how that would go. And so those are those two pieces where we're seeing a lot of this in schools and also how work is being set up. Background noise, overstimulation, spaces for people. Some of that's coming out as people becoming more and more aware of how to support neurodiversity and folks who are more. We keep adding to it. What do you mean by stature? Oh, yeah, height. That's what I think I mean. Is that what I mean? Great, that's what I mean. And so, but it's a factor, right? There, you actually can have for folks who have a significant difference in stature, right? Someone who's incredibly tall, someone who's quite short, is going to have a different space in some of these as you think about what height are your chairs, right? What are the stairs that you're requiring? And so some of those pieces as well with it.
The ones that was interesting to me when we first went through this is the vision one. And so I had, I'll explain this a little bit, but the answer was less interesting to me than how she's applying it, so.
14-point font is my default font, not 12. And so when you really think about how, how well people see, and when I'm asking you to read a handout, right? Our default font is generally 14-point font in all of our handouts. Because that makes a huge difference in access for people. And it's also going to help folks who are dyslexic, just so there's not so much on the page. It's going to help folks who arms are not longer. Like, it seems easier to push your page out than find your reading glasses, right? But that's a big piece of it, is some of those ways to apply what that looks like.
And I thought about how UW distributes information. There's language, but then there's also readability, right? And so I'd never thought about font. Anyway, that was, because I do that.
Right. Oh, well, and also font choice. Like, we generally default to Arial, which is a very functional font, but I wouldn't say it's the most beautiful font because of readability. And so that's another piece with that is looking at if we're going to expect reading to be a part of the training, what are some ways that we can handle that and do that? And we also ask before the training, like, do we know of anybody who has dyslexia? Do we know about the folks with vision issues? Because we'll print on a different colored paper. White paper with black ink is hard often for folks with dyslexia. But if we print on a slightly different colored paper, it's a huge difference, right? And so those are some of those pieces that we'll ask going into a training so that we can understand how to support the folks in the room.
And this is, this is really an observation, a little bit of feedback for the board. Whenever you're talking about DEI subjects, you tend to really focus on protected classes and race in particular. Some of the employee survey results that we got recently highlighted some of the job classification differences, just in how they responded, union versus non-union, for example. The type of work, so, and this was really highlighted in their different views on telework. And we have a really large percent of it, percentage of our organization is in a here and now response mode, 24/7, 365, keep the lights on, keep the water flowing. And their whole mentality is around this instantaneous response, and it drives their culture. At the same time, we have a significant part of our utility that is doing planning work and compliance work and design and things not about the here and now, but about the tomorrow and the next day and the next year. And it creates a lot of polarization and diversity on how different views in, how different things in the utility are viewed. And so, you know, when I think about diversity and inclusion, there's some really important things around, the typical ones. But in our organization, there's also a lot of reasons from an operational and a functional perspective to look at this. Things like, you know, union versus, because if you're a field-based or a facility-based worker, you hate telecommuting. You just hate it. If you're in a position where your product allows you to do that, you love it. And in fact, it came through in our, in our employee survey that that was totally polarized across the utility, and it had to do with your job classification. I'm not diminishing any of these others. I think part of diversity is you look at across, you know, across the different demographics that you have. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we have an organization that has its own forms of what has to highlight itself and come to the surface in how we operate. That's all those. Thanks.
And I think that's a nice lean into, you know, the different aspects of identity and experience are generally neutral. But we as a society, or we as an organization, or we as a group, will assign value to them as, because that is what humans do. And the question is, are we doing that appropriately and fairly is the next question I like to ask. But when you're starting to say, we have folks, we have folks who can tell work, we have this, who, when is a meeting scheduled? Does it have to be in person who gets to do that work? Who's able to do drop-of-a-hat work? Can you do that as a single mom? Like, can you do that? Those are some of those questions where I think when you start recognizing the inclusion, the exclusion, and the power differential, where this step really becomes so very, very important. Because on the page, some of this, I might think, I might be like, oh, this particular bullet.
bullet, if somebody's yes to that, that's great. And you're like, if somebody's yes to that, that's no. Right? And we have different personal opinions about that. But then we also start recognizing that as a group, we can assign power and benefit to different aspects of it. And we can also diminish power or, you know, assign judgment and negative judgment to some of those spaces and places. And that's where I think it really comes to life and an organization with a culture, with how that goes and how you see that. And, you know, you asked a question, John, about race and like, what is white? Right? And part of that, well, I mean, as someone who likes language, I'll say, part of the weird part is that white is a totally made up idea. And we have a huge amount of rules around it. It's in the original Oregon constitution about white. But it was an idea that was made up so that people could justify chattel slavery and figure out who was an indentured servant and who was some, an object that was owned. But it wasn't really a concept that existed very much before that. We just had it for, for so long and it plays such an important role in American society. But that's part of the question, right? The Irish didn't used to be white. Jewish people didn't used to be white, right? And the understanding of American history and what does that mean? But most, most people, I would say, would see somebody and have that judgment and say, like, you can be white and Hispanic now in the census even. Right? That sense of what those words mean keeps shifting. I mean, part of it shifts with social power and political capital that you get. And then part of it shifts when somebody decides that I like that other group even less, so I'm willing to let you off my table. And so those are some of those tough factors or some of this language where it does mean different things, right? I think it might, yes, please.
So who makes the call on that? Because I, I've got a lot of Asian heritage in my family. And all of a sudden, now the NAACP says they are no longer protected class or no longer a minority because they're called white aligned, because they're so affluent and they're so, they make too much money and they're too smart, basically, to cut to the chase.
So state law.
Who listens to, who sets the rules for this stuff?
So at the state level, the state decides. And so for the state level of protected classes, that would still be a protected class.
So it's legislature?
Well, when you're talking, the question is, we've got all these different rules at different levels, right? So the federal government sets the federal rules. The state sets the state rules. And then it's also going to be how people use the words about how they then enter and maintain the lexicon, right? Like, somebody's, what, if you call somebody a square, my kids will not know what that means, right? That meant something to my grandparents. There was not a legislative body that determined what slang meant. It was how it was used. And so I think with some of these pieces, there isn't an adjudicator who's getting to say yes or no on this. But you can say at a state law level, this is what this means, this is how we use that word. That's why legislators argue so much about how the words are used and what they mean. And so that's a big challenge with it, right? Because there are going to be social groups or political groups that want to say, this group counts, this group doesn't count anymore into this category. But at a state and federal law level, those were both still considered.
But my experience is, I found it very challenging because I spent eight years writing policy for all this. And I had trouble that one time when I said, well, let's just brown bag it, we'll get to get it tomorrow. I had to write an apology because I used that term. That was 10, 15 years ago. And when you don't know the rules, how can you play by the game? And that's what's frustrating to me is to, is not knowing the rules. I'm trying to be respectful, but apparently I offended the Hispanics at the table because of the brown bag term. You know, I didn't know, but, but I offended. And so you get called out on that. You get, you know, you, that creates me to push back and say, now, who's, who's the PC police? And, and that's challenging for somebody that, if you've been involved in a lot of these things and, you know, who writes the book? And where's the rulebook? And I'll go by the rules, but I can't go by the rules if I don't know what they are. And nobody tells you that they're reactive instead of proactive. And so that's why I think this is important to do that, and it's a living document. But it's very frustrating when your intent is to be insulting or derogatory or anything else. You know, sometimes, you know, the old school, you know what it's like, you know? There's a lot of terms we use in grade school that you wouldn't use today.
Yeah.
And trying to retrain, you know, there's so many different generations around this table. It's, it's challenging for people to stay engaged and not feel that you're offending somebody.
And I think that's a space where I generally try to default only, like, my objective is to be welcoming, right? And if I offend somebody, I want to know so I can work on them. And so I think that's a piece because there are going to be environments where, I mean, not like terminology just lies under the radar, nobody catches and offended by something, and other rooms where somebody is. So I think there's a, a difference between wanting, I don't know that I can, there is such a thing as a clean, tidy rulebook. I agree, the minute that sucker's printed, and I don't, I, I don't know what has become offensive because of TikTok in the last two minutes. But that space of recognizing that the key is, if I offended somebody, I want to know something, apologies. Right? And that's that space where it's important to them. I'm glad you did because that's important to the folks who offended. And I think it's easier to be able to say, these are some terms we know are outdated, we know we're not going to use. Right? And it's that space of understanding that being able to work. But our degree of language keeps changing. It's just going to keep changing.
Yeah.
So maybe this question a little bit for Frank as well, but based on your answer, you talk about the state and their definition of work. So the, um, you're a public institution. Basically, many of our, our structures and rules come from the state of Oregon. So based on your answer, that's a good reference point to start with.
I think when you start looking at the state, if you look at the city, if you look at the county, right? Those are some spaces that we exist within and I think are great places to start. You'll notice in your binder, you will find the state of Oregon DEI action plan.
She paid me a dollar to test it.
Yeah, under tab five, right? And the Lain County Equity Toolkit under tab four. Because we wanted to see that, you know, the amount of time it would take to go through and be like, here's what they have on page three, but providing those examples to you to see, this is what the state is already doing. This is what the county is already doing. To see some of those pieces and to have some of those examples. Because it's a really nice example of policy, and the state one is both the policy, is policy stuff and plan, and the county one is much more about put in action. You can kind of see that. We got, let's go Sonya and then Frank.
I was just going to say that, you know, state policy and federal policy, even more so, is going to be the very base level and is obviously not as reactive or responsive to the changing workforce that we want to recruit or need. And so being a more nimble organization, you should go above and beyond that and figure out ways that we can stay on top of that changing language because that's what we need to do to serve our customer base and recruit staff.
Yeah. Yeah. And so I think that's that piece where this is, I mean, I think this is, you know, the state plan was 2021, right? And then the county plan was most recently updated in August of 22, right? And so these would have been worked on for years before that. And so that piece to get to see that this is what they're doing, but also that this is definitely not the leading edge. But since you guys are starting new, like, this is a great place to have us references.
I think I was, I was going to say something similar to Sonya. I think there, that this board, not too long ago, we were talking about a policy, I think it was a safety-related policy, and we said that being compliant isn't necessarily just what we're trying to do here. Speaking from the operational side, we are highly regulated in, in the industries we serve and also in the fact of our size and structure and location. And, and those are, yeah. If, if the policy said be compliant, okay, there's one, there's like a whole bunch of things that, that fall into that already and, and, and you know that. And that helps to define some of the terms, actually, because you have, you have to have an understanding of that to, to be compliant. And so, but I think we're also looking for a piece that ties in with, with our mission and our values. So I guess I'll be.
No.
So tying in with our mission, to me, is, is just an example. So our mission's basically states that we're here to improve the vitality of our community through the products that we serve, water, consistency in water, consistent with the values of our community. And that consistent with the values of our community is where there's an opportunity for this to fit. We've also said, within our value statement, there's certain things that we, we value. We value diversity of perspectives, for example, treating each other respectfully. And there's, there's the basis, there's some jumping on things here. That will be on compliance to, to your, if compliance by itself, we could have a one-sentence policy and say, be compliant. But that's honestly already there. Because we have. Otherwise, I'd be looking for a job soon.
I just want to acknowledge what you brought up because it is really tricky. Like, language changes so fast and it's really hard to know, like, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. And, you know, there is no dictionary, no slang dictionary, or no diversity dictionary or anything. And it, it's really confusing sometimes because we do have words or things that we've used our whole lives and have a certain understanding of it. And then you use it and somebody suddenly tells you that it's offensive and you didn't mean it to be offensive, but they might have a whole new idea that is. And so I totally get what you're saying. I mean, me, I have a daughter who's young enough, who is up on, on language. I mean, really, it's like the young people that are the most current on the terms that are acceptable or not acceptable. And she calls me out on stuff all the time and I just think, is that unacceptable? But it is. So anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge how you're feeling because you're not the only one. And it's really, it is really confusing.
Well, I just thought the old curmudgeon was coming out and, you know, it's, it is what it is. I've tried not to be disrespectful, but it happens.
The other reality that we deal with related to that, Mindy, is our workforce is not all young. We, we have people ranging from, let's say, 20 through, let's take it together, 70 or more. And, and they all come with different understandings.
Yeah.
And at some point, intent matters also. And so I think creating a culture that is tolerant and has some grace around intent is, is important.
Yeah. I wanted to say that, that too, I think, Commissioner Brown, you answered your own question for number one, right? You wanted to know the reason for that, for the work and the fact that this is changing and that we need to give staff tools on both how to call somebody out if they say something that could be offensive, even if they didn't know, to react when we get called out. How do you take that in? How do you change behavior? How do you apologize? And then how do we prevent that from having to happen by having the education, even though it's constantly changing? And we'll need more education. But I think that that is a lot of, kind of, some of the basics for the reasons here in the work.
And as the language and as terminology continues to grow, and also as both communities, that people, or if people see themselves differently in different terms, right? If I'm working with a group and I'm talking about, like, demographics, I will often use Latino, Hispanic, and Latinx because they all mean slightly different things. And they all include slightly different people. And they all, as far as I know, are still polite and respectful ways to describe racial and geographic demographics of people. But there isn't one tidy word. And so I generally default to figuring out, what are the words that generally get me close enough? And can I use them not interchangeably, but together with each other? So the folks I'm talking with are get, hear themselves insulted, right? And so that's one of the ways that I've tried to manage that because often, like, we're doing these trainings often for very large groups of people, right? And so it's that space of where it's especially important. And so I will go ahead and use a variety of terms that, because I recognize that one person identifies as black, somebody else identifies as African-American, right? Somebody else identifies as BIPOC. And I have no idea that which is which and how. I don't need to take a show of hands, but I'm going to recognize that I'm going to use all the terms over the course of talking about something because someone is going to find one of those terms to represent.
So I guess I'm, I'm going to fall back to my question about how do we implement this into policy and kind of go to, you know, this is the, the base level, you know, that is legislative, right? As opposed to how much do we want to include here at a policy level? And, and the reason I'm thinking of that is because if we include everything at a policy level, then what, how does that manifest itself in, like, HR complaints? You know, when somebody says, I'm sorry, you know, I was discriminated against because the wrong pronoun was used for me. And now, since there's this vast list in our, you know, that we've drawn from to make the policy, does that make HR's role unfulfilled?
And so one of the pieces, I think, is that balance where recognizing that there may be multiple aspects of identity and experience in this world. And as an organization, you're going to prioritize certain categories. And I would strongly encourage you at least to start with state and federal protected classes, right? And so those are some pieces to look at. And then also, HR is going to always ask the question, is this a pattern of the heat? Right? And because that's a very different thing. Somebody, yes. Or did you? And this is, there are your people, so I'm like, I'm going to let you go for this one if I'm heading off in the right direction. But like, that's a, those are some big pieces, which HR is always going to want to understand that. Because there are certain infractions in an HR system. If somebody comes to work loaded and punches somebody, that doesn't need to be a pattern. Right?
I punched anybody recently.
I want to have standards. Yes.
I think that, you know, to your question, John, there are some pretty interesting models out there to look at. And there are some areas that I think become pretty natural from a policy perspective, you know? And I'll, and I'll give you one, for example. We want to incorporate DEI into our recruiting and hiring processes. Okay, we want to include it in our compensation. We want to include it in our opportunities to advance in the area. There's, there's different, different aspects that you can look at and you can see, you know, using some of the other examples that incorporate well into a policy, but then don't drive you so specifically that you lose your opportunity to, to live and implement it, right? And so I think there's, because I think that, and we're, actually, that's, that's an, an area that we always kind of look at, right? Is it creating the environment where you can actually develop solutions and provide the right environment and culture for your organization, at the same time providing appropriate guidance and a direction, right? So.
And writing it broadly enough that it survives and writing it specific enough that it's useful, right? And that's the magic sweet spot. I'm on the Charter Review Committee for Lain County. And you tell me, there's some things that were written. Maybe they were, and there are some things that are, it's a much easier application to say 50 years from now, this seems like it will still be relevant, right? And so I think there's some of that balance because the policy does not need to include your implementation plan, this, right? The policy is a policy. And then staff are looking at, what does that mean of life? How do we apply that to where we are now? How does that then get us to where we want to be in two years? How do our efforts change in two years? Right? So the policy is a piece of the work that then is also going to exist in partnership with plans, with effort, with tactics, right? Like, and that's, I think, that piece where it can be so tempting to want to be like, well, do we need to have this in the policy? Sometimes you can have a very, well, it can't be generic, but it can be broad in some really important useful ways. But then the question is where the, being sure to add the need to it, understanding what your metrics are, understanding what the rollout looks like and the benchmarks and the deadlines, right? Those are some pieces that go into playing. And that's part of that temptation to sometimes want to be like, I want a four-page policy. This may not be a place where you need a four-page policy. Careful, like, if you want to. Careful, like, if you want a four page policy, talk, but I mean, right? Those are some of those pieces, and it works hand in hand. So I end up the gender unicorn in part to point out how language and society shift in this sentence, right? So transgender issues and pronoun use and identity are things that are growing in awareness and growing in acceptance, I think, for lots of places. We're seeing some parts of this country that are having a very aggressive backlash against that. We're seeing parts of this country that are having a very intentional acceptance of that. And so this terminology is really sort of timely in that way. There's also terminology that in some communities has been used for fifty years or twenty years, right? It's just that space of it's entering the mainstream and it's then showing up at work or at school.
How do you respect somebody's religious belief when they really have a problem with this?
Tell me what.
Well, because there's a lot of people that won't even have this discussion. And so if you want more information, you go to transstudent.org and everything else. And they, there's very fundamentalist people that find it fancy even having this discussion, even having that, that image of of unicorn and things such as that and flag. How do you, how do you maintain respecting their religious beliefs and still have this discussion?
If they work at EWEB. And I would say at work, we call people by the name they use at work and use the pronouns that they've identified as theirs.
Oh, but let's just say in this body, there was somebody here that had really strong religious beliefs that found this offensive. How would you continue to have this discussion and not offend them?
Well, I think that's a really interesting question. Who's comfort are we preserving? Because for the members and the employees who are transgendered, they also.
That's correct.
And so I think that's a space and a question where this work is really going to bring those questions to light. And to say, is EWEB an employer where we expect employees to use other colleagues' preferred pronouns and call it by the name this other employee has, or not? And if you are, then my name's Morgan and my pronouns are she/her and I'm excited to look next to you. The same way that if I would call you Bill, even if your name was William, because you've asked me to call you Bill. That's how you show respect for me. I'm not necessarily going to go argue with you or just text with you, right? But at work, we treat people professionally. And we're asking people to treat people professionally. And we're going to do that. Like, there's plenty of, there's all, I mean, are you going to force the dining hall to be kosher? I mean, there's lots of different religious beliefs that can come into play with that. So I think that definition for EWEB to say, this is how we treat people professionally. We expect that, I think, is a space where organizations have a lot, we see a lot of organizations very comfortable.
One thing that I, I wrote down, John, when we had a, this same discussion with the executive team, was what she just said, which is, there, there will be come times here when we have to decide as an organization whose comfort are we trying to preserve? And and part of that goes back to something I've struggled with, which is when we talk about, we want people to bring their whole selves to work. And my question is, what if part of themselves is a jerk? They want you to bring the good parts to work, not the jerk part. We want to leave, we want that left at home. And there are times when the parts of the wholes have conflicts. And as an organization, and this is probably part of the implementation, not necessarily the policy, but we're going to have to make some conscious choices around how some of these things get. And that's not necessarily going to be easy in today's society because there's very, in some cases, very rigid rules around. And so that, when in our first meeting, I walked away going, okay, there's, the policy is probably going to outline why and what, and the how becomes the organization's. And not how is going to be, in some cases, challenging. So that's what I want. Other than that, other than the fact that you said general managers don't have a sense of humor or something. I remember that one.
Do be careful when you're the boss and how you evaluate that whether people are laughing because it's funny.
That's right. I am genuinely.
This is the power dynamics example, right? Power dynamics matter. And then there's all the follow up, like, and I also say that comfort and safety are different. Your example is someone who thinks that a trans person doesn't have a right to exist. They have a right to employment, they have a right to safe housing, and you're threatened with safety of them.
There are people that have those.
True. And so I think that's a space when you look at policy, it might be uncomfortable to do this, but otherwise, to not do it would threaten the safety of the other. And it's tough if you're someone who's never, or this is the first, these, some of these topics are the first times that's experienced for someone, or they've never done that. They've never been the only person like them in a group. Whereas there are other folks who spend most of their life with them. Right? So I'm looking at a decision between bringing someone's safety or expecting someone's safety to preserve someone's health, it's a really important time to check it. Okay? I think our priority is working on a back here. Really tough to do that and it's really important. So we are unicorn, right? And part of this is to point out just those spaces with gender, it's multiple different factors to someone. Because someone might be transgender and still attracted to his gender or that gender. Or like, they, they don't all go hand in hand. Somebody can transition from male to female and still like women. They can transition from male to female and still like men. It's a different question, right? It's about the identity of someone, not necessarily who you would love as a romantic partner. And so that's part of what I enjoy about this because it fully sort of disaggregates some of these factors and can show how these terms mean different things. We're talking about really specific terminology and sort of what that means. And so that's another piece where this can really come into play. And where some of these questions do come up. Someone I've asked, had people ask, they say, well, I have an employee who transitioned, still married to a man. What does that mean? And I'm like, tell you a pronouns they want used? Yes. Does it matter to you who your employees are married to? I said, no, go with their pronoun, right? Like, sometimes it can, because we don't know. And so it's tempting to want to say, oh, I want to understand all of this. There's a level of nosiness that it's not necessary at work. And sometimes wildly, because there's that space to say, that's your name and that's your pronoun and stuff like that. I know how to talk about you in the third person to a colleague when I write an email, right? To say, and so those are some of those pieces where it can be.
The opposite also applies. There's people who bring stuff to work that I don't want to hear that. I mean, I have, I want to focus on the work and the professional interaction, and you're bringing too much to me. And so it does, it does apply both ways.
Oh, very true, so. And I'd say that's also on the employee, I think, to sort of determine where that is. And also a colleague can say, yeah, I really want to focus on the project we're working on. And that's often an okay thing to say. If you're then saying, I want to focus on the project we're working on, I'm going to extensively research the name you were born with and only call you by it, even though I've only known you as this person. That's not okay, right? But some of those spaces with it, I think it really is that piece of figuring out where hard feelings lies. How do you? It's an important question and it's not, that's what are going to be. And that's that piece where it generally isn't a policy, but it generally is at the execution level, at HR, at staff level, understood, sort of.
Well, I would say, I mean, I asked to have, I'm going to ask. My piece because I wanted to show that, hey, I may screw up a little bit. I want you to know that I'm fine. And that's part of the being inclusive and welcoming and others to have a sense of belonging. So even though it may, you know, I. It's for me, it's just, it's a sign to show that I care about.
And I think a lot of people do that and they show that, and that's why you see increasingly vanity tags. And it makes it all easier if I offer mine, you should not offer yours. And also that's a space where you also want to make sure that you're not demanding people care about you. One of the inadvertent things you can do is force somebody to out themselves in that space. And maybe someone won't do that. They may much rather have someone misgender them than have them to actually out themselves. And so it's that piece of letting folks decide if you want to share it, for sure. If you don't want to share it, don't. But if someone shared you their pronouns, we suspected. Yeah, so we, so here's some examples. So we've got a couple of sentences and a couple of different examples there of how different folks might use their pronouns or share their pronouns if they want to. And you'll notice that we've got one of them on there that's she/her, Ella, Aya. And that is from an indication where folks will sometimes use pronouns to display, to indicate more than gender identity, but also will sometimes use it to demonstrate cultural identity, right? So somebody who's bi-cultural, somebody who's Hispanic or Latina, we've seen that increasingly showing up. Where people are indicating that not only do they speak Spanish, but they're also bi-cultural. In that space. And so it's a way that they, you know, and that's part of that piece where there aren't necessarily hardened past rules. But the key with that would be making sure that the pronouns that you're sharing are respectful of the fact that other people, obviously. And that's where you'll see there was quite a bit of flag turned in a few years ago of people who were making up gender words and using them as pronouns. And they were pulled off as people who were making fun of people who are transgendered, not as people who are trans represented. So I think that's that space, are you doing this to make fun of somebody or are you?
Just a question on what you think. I almost feel like I need a special decoder. And at some point, does it become a name of human? I mean, it's, at some point, is there, in our future, is there an acceptance of just?
I would say if we think, if whatever we think of as average gets inclusive, oddly enough, maybe. If that's that piece, right? If you think of, okay, I'm thinking about average employee or average customer. And so that's that space I've wondered about, right? If that's in, maybe then, in a lot of science fiction, what you do is people have like jewelry that indicates gender or things that indicate culture, right? And so I don't necessarily mean to say that that's a black point, but they've, they've got some pretty interesting.
I don't mean average, I mean just range or white. I mean, is there something that captures in the future? Or is this, is that just unrealistic?
Well, I think for someone who doesn't see themselves as included in the working or someone who feels like they're constantly fighting space, and so we don't have that.
And that's the human condition. So probably the answer to your question is no.
Right.
Well.
Yeah, so good.
I know when we went through, well, I'm, yeah, we had a training.
Yes, we did.
We had a whole list of, I've never heard of, I have not seen since. And so I'm curious if.
Shortened to these because these are the most likely ones. And there's still one or two that's pretty odd. That's odd, but rarely used. I'm in my terminology, myself, my judgment, right? So there's different non-gendered pronouns. There has been, there for years were lots of different non-gendered pronouns that people use, that people were drawn to, that smaller pockets of the population might use. And one of the things that the internet has been interesting about is it makes it easy to broadcast this great variety. And it's also leading to language getting narrowed pretty quickly because a few terms continue to get used. And so like, we don't have the same regional terminology. And also with non-gendered pronouns, we don't have the variety. And some of the stuff I've read is thinking about, and part of that is because of the way the internet works and the people hearing the same thing. So you don't have a water cooler and a bubble or meaning different things as a drinking fountain, depending on where you are in the country. And so for pronouns, non-gendered pronouns are increasingly used as plural pronouns. So they/them has really come to be the dominant use of a non-gendered pronoun in English that I'm seeing, that we're seeing out there. There was an attempt in some communities and spaces to have a singular non-gendered pronoun, right? And so that was Z, it was Shay, it was zer, it was a couple of things that were single pronouns. But they/them has really taken off, and I'd say has a, if this were marketing, they'd have a huge amount of the market space, right? So they/them has really become, I'd say, the dominant non-gendered pronoun, which is confusing for some because it's plural traditionally. But in that space, it is used as both a plural or a singular, which in non-English languages happens a surprising amount of time for those of us who are most English speakers. But that's what I've really seen, I think most of us have really seen take off, is they/them but used in the singular form. Yes.
I got a couple of questions, but one of them is, I see the use of pronouns shifting to meaning more than the pronoun. If you use, if you identify and say, I have to use my pro, I want you to use certain pronouns, that could be liberal or conservative. You know, if you're asking to, if you're asking to use pronouns, a lot of times that may be a liberal or a progressive thinking person. And if you're not asking for it, it it leans towards a, you know, a conservative or a, you know, I'll say in this room, you're a Trump or, you know, you're a Trumper or you're a Biden, right? If you're, if you are asking to use, and I see it shifting into that dynamic, right? And I, I don't like that, but I, I see it. You know, there's certain things in our, in our community that have become political. You know, you go back to wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, right? That, that was, got away from being a health issue and got into being a political issue. I can see that happening with pronouns as well. That it's, it's going away from being a safety or a recognizing issue into being a political issue. And then the second question I have is, you say they/them, I'm still not sure how I use that in a sentence.
Perfect, that's our next activity. So on the thing that got handed out, right? It's got, we get to edit sentences. So let's use they/them in those sentences, right? And so you'd use it in place of a singular pronoun or a plural pronoun. So I think we have an example on there. Oh, good, here it is. All right, so we've got that sentence, he ordered a burger, fries and a milkshake. Oh, yeah.
Good. Can I just elaborate on what I think you're saying? So, because I know, I'm going to read your sentence and it says, he ordered a burger, fries and a milkshake.
Yeah.
Now, you could say, they ordered a burger, fries and a milkshake. But without additional context, you don't know if they refers to a plural group of people or a single individual. So it's, it doesn't give you, just by changing the pronoun in a sentence, you don't get the full context of what you're trying to answer.
So how else could you edit?
Well, I would go, a burger, fries and a milkshake was ordered.
Sure, you could.
Get rid of it altogether, but then I did that with Kelly and she said, well, who? You, you're losing the person in this. And then, then, well, John ordered a burger, fries and a milkshake. So, I mean, but I'd say just the use of the pronoun where it's going to, to yours, just the changing of a pronoun doesn't give you the full perspective.
Sure, but generally, we're not just having one sent, we're not just editing, you know, the pen and my ant is on the table, right? We're in a room, we see someone, there's a table, we know how big the group is, right? So this is that sense for us to practice it. Yeah, Mindy?
Well, and also, if it's really important to, like, you want to emphasize using people with preferred pronouns, you might say, I'm just going to pretend you use they. You would say, John ordered a burger and fries and they also want. So you're just kind of reinforcing that, that those are the preferred pronouns. But I also wanted to speak to your point about your comment about like political kind of distinction. Me, it's really an age distinction. Like, if you were to survey young people today, this is not a big deal for many of them. This is like, this is what they do. They, they talk about pronouns, they identify themselves by pronouns. They're very, they're much more open with exploring different pronouns too. And I think for full, awful, dry age, it can be really challenging because it's, we partially understand, but let's do, but, but I do think that if you were to like go into a high school, college or something like that, you'd kind of be shocked.
Yeah, I mean, I guess. If I, if I put into a Zoom meeting and I don't have my pronouns next to me, I almost feel like, oh, he's, he doesn't understand. Right? And I'm not, I'm not.
Or judging you.
They're judging me because I don't feel the need. I didn't, I don't, at this point, I don't feel that I have the need to put him in there. Because I never have, right? And maybe that's, that's wrong, but, you know, it's, it's with the Zoom thing and identifying yourself. It became mandatory that you have to put in your pronouns. And I don't know when, when that happened. And now I'm seeing pushback. Again, left and right about those issues. So.
So why is it anybody else's business what my preferences, my pronouns are?
Totally. And I think that's that space where I, as a society, we've decided gender matters.
Pardon me?
As a society, I'd say we've decided gender matters. We say ladies and gentlemen. We say Mr. and Mrs.
I've been called on using female and human and all that because it has the word man in it, it has the word male in it, and all those other things. And so again, the old guy's confused, but I'm just wondering, why is it important? Why would anybody in this room care if I use he and him, or she or her, or they/them? Why does it matter? Sonya?
I mean, for me, it's, if it matters to that person who's been marginalized or made to be in a box or not felt like they were accepted. For me, I'm, I'm only putting it out there not to off any of you or judge you for not doing it. I put it out there because I'm recognizing that they've gone through a lot and that's a hard space to be in. And so it's not, and I'm not expecting, just like she said earlier, I'm not expecting others to put it out there or not. Because it might out them or make them uncomfortable to do that. So, you know, for me, it's about creating a space that if somebody wants to share that, they feel welcome to do that. So that others can treat them how they want to be treated. It's not about the golden rule of we, we treat others how we want to be treated. That's great. But not everybody wants to be treated in that way. So it's, it's kind of that next level of how do we treat others how they want to be treated and invite them to share that if they want to. And if they don't want to or don't feel comfortable, that's okay. And this is a space where we have that ability to, to do that or not.
And I think that's that key, is that if somebody wants to share them, they can. And like, but if you don't, you don't need to, right? And that's that space where particularly if your gender presentation matches the pronouns we prefer. I mean, you can choose, you're much less likely to be misgendered. And if you don't mind being misgendered, then it especially doesn't matter, right? Like, if you don't mind being called she or you, you can do whatever. Because it's not a, it really isn't a rule as much as it's a space to say. If somebody told you, my name's Morgan and my pronouns are he/him. It would be polite of you when you talk about me to say, he did a good or bad training, right? Like, that's what my pronoun is. Um, but I think that's that piece of them recognizing, again, if I, if it's important to me to pronounce someone else's name right. This falls into that category for me. It's for me, it's a way to show that I respect who we are and that this matters to you. And I'm willing to extend the effort to pronounce your name right. And I'm willing to extend the effort to use your pronouns if you want to share them.
As an organization our size, we have to make. That person feel comfortable and we have to make John also feel, to use your example, feel comfortable for not.
Yeah.
In combination with not just the fact that we have 500 people, the fact that we interact with another 200,000 people. That we have to, we can't, at the same time, make you feel uncomfortable for not using it. We have to balance that with the respect and inclusiveness we show to those who do. For whatever reason, it could be a reason like Sonya's, or it could be a reason that's very personal to the, to the one who's. How they want to be recognized. So it's, I think we have to be able to handle both of them.
And I'd say the line for me continues to be not, to encourage people to share their pronouns. That's not something I want to impart. But if I know someone's pronouns that I use, that's the piece.
What's your default?
Oh, it depends. It totally depends on a host of factors. I generally go with gender presentation by and large. So if someone, yeah, if someone is, but how they do that, right? If someone's wearing a skirt and earrings and has long hair. I'm probably going to go with she/her. But I also might ask, right? So it kind of depends. But so often I do the shortcut of gender presentation. If there's situations where I'm not sure I ask, I often I'll just volunteer my own and not ask. I'll say, oh, I'm Morgan, my pronouns are she/her, and I leave it up to the other person, right? Hopefully they tell me their name and then I use their name. And they, Negan really likes hamburgers. Let's get them one, right? And I may even default to neutral, right? With my kids, I live in South Eugene, the names of my children's school friends, I have no idea, right? And I also don't, like, I don't know how they identify, let alone what's on their birth certificate. I default to them by and large. And so, and I'll ask my kids, I'll be like. And they're like, no, no, this week. They're like, great. Or this person is this, right? I'm like, great, I'll go with that. So I think it's that space of being kind and open, right? Kelly, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one of the other interesting spaces is that what do we, when we interact with the public? And we don't have any gender presentation and we hear, we get an email from somebody and it just has a name, right? I don't want to assume that a Morgan is a male or a female. I don't want to assume that a John is a male or a female, right? And so for me, a lot of it is trying to get more comfortable with not going with any gendered. Thing, in, especially in that instance where you have very little opportunity to ask and very few other clues.
Yeah, we did some work, Mark, like where we did the entire thing using no gender pronouns at all, right? And it involved stories, it involved workshop examples. And switching into that space took a minute, but once we were there, it actually, a lot of people changed, right? We talked about their title, right? We said, and the engineer walked into the room, right? There's lots of different ways to identify somebody that have nothing to do with gender. It's just where, I was certainly brought up to say sir and ma'am, right? And when that's what you're taught is the height of respect. Or miss or misses, not only is that gender, but that's miracle status. And that's a lot of information that I was taught to quickly glean from staring at a stranger so that I could be respectful to them. Right? And so that's that space of understanding that some of that, some of those skills, I don't need them. Was taught by my mother who grew up on an army base. That this really matters, right? Like, I've learned that if my goal is to be respectful, that I can do. And now we can use first names. First names, first names. That wasn't appropriate ever until you were 45, just growing up. But that, that is helpful. Just case in point, I was drafted because they couldn't figure out if. Negan was male or female. And so I had to present my birth certificate to convince them indeed that that was.
You were not drafted, Emily.
I was not drafted. But at the time, McCullough hadn't written The Thornbergs and Negan was not one of the most common names in this country. But again, it has to do with that. We also, in writing, as Kelly said, I remember clearly, there was a very different, that you were sanctioned. If you called Miss Isiri, Mrs., or Mrs. Thompson, Miss. Because those distinctions were clear and appropriate and you had to make that decision very quickly. And, and as you know, there were consequences for bad decisions or bad choices on that part. And this has, this is just the next generation of those same things. When we did this same presentation, I said, one of the things I defaulted to was M period. And a last name.
So when you're writing, you know, when you're writing a letter, right? It used to be dear sir or madam. What's the default?
Well, it depends on the environment, right? If it's, if you're a manager and you're writing to your team, sometimes I go with team, right? If you're writing it to a person, I say, attention, hiring manager. Right? There's lots of different ways. It depends on the setting. You can say, you know, hello and continue. Or I'm Smith. Yeah. And so there are, there are ways to do that. That don't involve gender, but they are sort of different from what we learned when we were taught to write a letter for a lot of.
You.
Right? Well, and I think that's that space because it's, the premise of dear sir or madam is to start it with respect, right? The idea, when we added madam to it, like the, a gaspedness of people, that there might be a lady getting this formal letter, right? I mean, this has shifted quite a bit over, like, time with that space. And so like my, if you've got, I've got British relatives who get annoyed when you say sir because they're not a knight, right? Like, it's just, language is funny that way. Sonya and Frank.
Well, and on the flip side of that, I mean, somebody who grew up with that, the respectful way to talk to them may be sir or madam.
Yes.
Because that's the way that they would, that they would expect. Now, you'd have to know more about them, but that, that might be the, you know, the appropriate place for that usage.
Mm-hmm. Because it does really matter, right? And if you know you're talking to someone who uses male pronouns, call them Mr. so-and-so, right? Like, that's great. It's not to say that you don't ever use gender. It's that you're just recognizing that you're using gender. I wouldn't say it's that space. Yeah, Frank.
Well, and as, you know, looking at this long list of various different aspects of it, diversity. There are some of those that are utter, that are driven by profession, you know, esquire or doctor or, you know, things like that. And so there's, there's some consideration there, just, just beyond the pronouns that were. Driven by gender or marital status or knighthood.
Precisely.
So, so there's other things that drive that too.
I've got in massive trouble with my grandmother because I addressed a letter to my grandfather as grandfather. And she sent it back to me and said he did not go to medical school to be addressed this informally. So, right, like, titles do matter to people. That was a lesson for my six-year-old self, you know, to learn that you addressed it to doctor. And I was like, I can do that going forward. Thank you for my Christmas present. Yeah, right.
Can I take this to the policy level?
Please, thank you.
Yeah.
So take a stab at it. So to me, this policy would help say that, that isn't inclusive and. Do the traction, of course, or, you know, whatever the use, right? And as part of that, then the implementation piece would be the education around these terms. We also have a behavior policy already in place. So we have a really robust HR policy around behaviors, right? So behaviors then would be not that, John, you didn't identify yourself. It would be more around that, hey, as an organization, accept both of these. And then if there is. A conflict or, and I heard this from other ECC member. Organization that's, that's gone through this, that people start using those, weaponizing them to some extent, whether it's politics or. Or harassment or whatever. So then that folds into a behavior issue which goes into an HR performance management. So by doing that and speaking that out loud, we have now said, hey, it's okay. To use their pronouns in this particular case. Finding the pool of people that can apply here. You're also having people here feel like their organization will. That's how I kind of see it kind of coming together, but.
Yeah, very much so. Let's turn to page five and take a look at this next piece of text. And these are some of those examples where I think you start to see that individual and then interpersonal behaviors, right? And then also how that then builds into organizational discrimination or inclusion. Or systemic discrimination or inclusion, right? And so this came from an organization called Race Forward. It is focused on racism. But we can also use words like discrimination or inclusion there to get some of those pieces with it. Because sometimes there can be this sense of, well, if we can't regulate how somebody thinks or feels in their heart of hearts. Like, is that, what are we even doing here? Well, and the point is, I'd say is that you're creating an organizational culture. That you're talking to people about how they have interpersonal relationships. At work, when I'm talking to someone, I will treat them this way. And when we have those expectations, that's what can create a fair and inclusive organization. And so that's one of those pieces. Also, I think there's a growing space of understanding where the idea that someone's behavior is discriminatory. And at work, what we want is to have people make discriminant or have discriminatory behavior. It's not about legislating what is in their heart or whether they are good or bad. It is saying, these behaviors you're engaging with are discrimination and that's not okay here. So what we need to have you doing at work are the following pieces. And that's different. I think for a while, there was this idea that it was about having like, because we see this where someone says. Well, they told me I was racist, but I'm really a good person, right? And it's that connection that racism and good person are on the exact same level. Instead of saying, well, did I do or say something racist, right? It's about the, it's increasingly thought of as about the behavior, not about the goodness of someone's heart or their character. You see, they're a really good person, I think, right? Instead of saying, well, they also continue to only promote white people. They continue to have every person that they have a disciplinary issue with is black. I think we need to talk about this, right? There's a statistical difference here that we need to figure out, right? And it's not necessary to say this is a good or bad person, it's to say, the results in this department continue to follow racial demographic lines. I, there's, they're there and we should figure that out and talk about it. It's about those behaviors, right? And so I think that's that difference. And so that's why I wanted to draw that, we wanted to bring this forward to show that internalized, and then you start interpersonal, institutional and structural. Are really those places where that policy and that culture come into play. Because how we treat each other is how culture is created. Who has to follow the rules and who doesn't have to follow the rules is a really important factor for an organization's culture.
How power is moved through an organization. How it's disparate, how it's privileged, how it's compromised, how it's punished. And those are the kinds of things your policy will include, not the metrics, not the implementation. But as you're looking at policy creation, what you're trying to extract from that is how to take out the disinherent, the disingenuous. Discrimination, a discrimination that is targeting someone with more or less.
Yeah, when you talked a little bit about sort of the behavior, say the result.
Yeah, totally.
Intent matters. In an example, I think that you talked about, which is if someone misuses a pronoun, is that harassment? And it may not be harassment, but if their intent was to go back research and use that. For discriminatory purpose, then it does meet that definition. So a single outcome without further context doesn't lead you to sort of. Yes or no kind of answer. Either, and either does sort of the term inclusivity. So when you, when you look at that definition, you can provide. So make sure that everyone has equal access to the same opportunities and the, so you can ensure that there's equal access. That doesn't mean equal outcome. And, and so sometimes when you jump to the result, like you, you mentioned, well, they're not hired, they're, they're only hiring white people. Well, you can have a very equitable process and your outcome can still be hiring only white people. Even though it was equitable. So it's a combination of the outcome and the intent that matters. You can't just look at one or the other and say, we have a black or white. You can't just look at one or the other and say, we have a black or white. That's not.
It didn't really, but we know what you mean. Yeah.
Issue.
I, so part of, yes, but I add an end of if, if the system seems like it's being fair and you have people of lots of different races and ethnicities and experiences applying, but the only people you're hiring are white men. I would question whether really how fair it is. A question I have, because you're not, you have a statistically wide range of applicants. But something about either what you prioritize, what you're looking for in hiring, an expectation that they have a graduate degree and what does that in America, who gets to have a graduate degree, right? Like, because there's a larger context to it. And so that doesn't mean that it's inherently vile, but there's, it, it would make me wonder and I would want to start to look into it, right? And that's that difference from saying, on high, I'm going to judge it versus saying, I wonder if we could do this better or differently.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying I would include equity in the entire process, including, including the decision maker. So, yeah, I, I think that the outcome is it, you have to look at the outcome as a piece of it, but you can't draw too many conclusions, I'd be clear, without the full context of it.
Yeah, and with a, particularly with a small sample set.
Yeah.
Right, particularly. I will say, if you have a large sample set and it walks like a duck and it looks like a duck, you should figure out if it's a duck.
But.
That's very different from one versus 200, right? And so I think, but that's often where 200 tries to get swept under the rug to say, but this one was fair and this one was fair and this one was fair and this one's fair. We just only, and I'm saying white men because it's an absolutely trite example, but that's what I'm using in my trite example to overly generalize. After a while, it's really tough to make that case that it truly is when at, when your sample is 200 and then still all that's happening. That brings up some really important questions about who's determining whether or not it's fair to me.
But, so, I mean, we get, we get demographics of the workforce in our, in our quarterly reports. And there are certain jobs in this organization that maybe the applicant pools aren't there. I'm, I'm thinking lineman, right? If you look at the lineman pool, and, and I'm not saying minority or non-minority, but male to female. Okay? And that's the one that always sticks out, right? In, in lineman and, and those types of careers, it's not institutional bias, it's what's walking in the door bias. And is that at the union level, who's trading it? And it's beyond our control or is it? And, and then I see one of the problems with that is, is if it's outside of the organization's control. Because I've got an application for 10 linemen and I've got 20 applications and 20 of them are men. And I have to fill these positions. I've, I have to fill the positions. That homogenization then breeds culture in a department. And that culture is hard to, to change. It's just a reality. And so, how do we, you know, you're saying if it looks like a duck and, and acts like a duck.
Figure out if it's a duck, right? Not that I'm saying it is. I'm saying you got, you got to ask. Well, I think those are good questions you're asking. Are you saying we do see homogeneous groups? Let's understand why. Yeah. And maybe it is the training. Maybe it is the, maybe it is something else. Maybe.
I mean, we see it report after report, but it's not that, it's not that the working groups and the hiring people are trying to diversify that working group. It's just that they don't have the ability to, with the qual for in, in this industry, there's certain qualifications that, you know, it doesn't matter if you're black, white, blue, male or female, you've got to know how to put a fuse in a 10,000 watt pole. And if you don't have that qualification, I can't hire you.
And if there's a bottleneck ahead of you in the system, that sorts, but that's all that rises in that space. I think that's a really important question. I think another question to then ask is, what does it mean to be a lineman in an organization? We promote, who becomes a GM someday, right? Like, how does that then work? If you're a customer service representative, who I'm, I'm going to stereotype and say, I mean, don't be surprised if you have more women in customer service than you do as line staff right out in the field, do they have a similar path into management, right? Those start to be other questions I'd wonder about, right? With those pieces. So, we're going to go Kelly and the G.
And I'll just add too, like, a lot of things are outside of the control of a particular organization, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't influence things. And so we may not be able to make all the change, but if we're doing things to promote jobs, where could we promote? Or if we're developing partnerships to build pipelines for certain job classifications, could we partner with a university and can we ask them, what are your marketing tools and how are you trying to get representative students across lots of different characteristics into your ranks? Like, there's questions that, and we can't control them. We can't tell them what to do, but if we start asking the questions, then that might.
So, a matter of understanding the difference between racism and discrimination, I'll give you a quick example. If the former school J decides to build two new elementaries in South Virginia, one on a two-acre site, which should have been on a 10-acre site, spend $80 million and then find another $11 million for a swing school, so the kids don't have to double up with anybody else. Those two areas that they build those schools in happen to vote 85% for all the levies, but the ones that don't, YG and Kelly out here in this area, that vote against the levies, they have to jam those kids in. They're all, there's 500 of them in a 400 capacity. Is that discrimination or racism?
Well, none of both. So, discrimination is going to be a bigger catch-all term in that space when you look at that piece. So, it could be that. It could be a disequity issue. It could be favoritism. It could be lots of different things. So, racism is going to be a specific type of discrimination.
Yeah. To me, that notes that it's going to be race. I mean, it's going to be race-based.
Racism is going to be.
Discrimination is maybe because of voting habits.
Discrimination is big. Discrimination is all of these. Discrimination can be transphobia. Discrimination can be ableism. Discrimination can be biased against, I mean, discrimination is people who don't have English as their first language. Discrimination is the any of it. And then there are legal definitions for what that also means. For the purpose of the way I think you and I are using that word, discrimination is going to be any of that. Racism is a type of discrimination.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Question is, why is Board Day's policy letting that happen? Man, they can fill 11 million bucks. Get me on that topic. I mean, to me, it's not fair for the kids out here. We're talking about policy, so what can we do as a board to, to avoid things like that? And I would hope we would be aware of it too, because it's, there's some other examples, like look at the sound walls along up the hill line. Where are the expensive homes? Who has the sound walls?
Yes. So, this is lovely. Thank you, girl. Sonia, yes, and now until the next thing.
I just wanted a quick time check. So, we have 20 minutes left.
Yeah.
In this, I, I think we have quite a bit more to do, so maybe I'm wrong, so.
So, the next one is going to be to page six.
Page five.
So, right? Well, oh, so, but we're almost done with our tab one and the tab, the rest is reference points for you. We're not getting through the whole notebook. We're going to have a two-hour trade-in. That, well, that would, for four days together, we will get through the entire binder, but for tonight, we will get through tab one. And so if you go to page six, you see some of those examples that you were asking me to take earlier, which is what's the role in this work for the board? Right? Not just policy, which is really important, but also those other places where the board y'all are. And so we have this list and so we have the staff, because we got to meet with some folks, that we talked about some of these staff level things with. We're going to get to talk to the diversity team. That's why they're on the list. We wanted to sort of show everybody that, to her questions we're asking every group. And so as the Board of Commissioners, we talked about a lot of different topics. We looked at this ginormous list of identity and experience. We talked about discrimination. We've talked about race. We've talked about policy. But these are the places where the board is going to meet the road. And so a question we have would be, how might someone's aspects of identity and experience impact how they're going to interact with an experienced eWeb in these situations? And so this is where normally we would say, talk to the person next to you, but it's a public meeting and we can't do that. So, instead, we're going to say, talk to everybody, right? So, let's pick, who wants to pick one off the top where you're like, that one in particular, I want to be sure we talk about. Right? And this is where I think sound walls come up. This is where I think public comment comes up, right? Like, this is where a lot of these pieces, what does it bring when you really are talking about, what does this look like in the day-to-day where y'all as a Board of Commissioners, right? Pick a bullet. Let's get started.
Public outreach.
Love it. Great. Tell us about how might some of these aspects of identity, experience really influence how someone experiences that or who you're targeting?
So much.
So much.
Where we choose to engage with people, when we choose to engage with people, how we present ourselves, the materials that we bring to share with other people, what staff members are there.
Language then, totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, right? And so, because a lot of those spaces, when you think about what's access to the space, it's a place where people feel safe, right? Are you dealing with that community that does or doesn't trust the police? Are you having an event in the Black community at the country club? Right? Like, how tone deaf is the situation? Do people feel comfortable within that space and where you are? What's their literacy level? How angry are they, right? Like, all of these factors really matter.
That's the ever angry.
How do people, how do people perceive public agencies as a, yes, right?
Are you sitting on the dais on a stage in that, like, the, the high school theater and you're up here and they're down here, right? Bunch of this stuff. What else do other folks, what else comes to mind for other folks as you think about public engagement?
Is there's a, a bit of a deference or at least listening to people who are close to a project, for example, right? Our public engagement on the water tanks is like focused on the people in the neighborhood. And we do some outreach to other people in the rest, you know, the rest of our thousands of customers, but don't tend to hear a lot of them. So, we get this kind of amplified sound from the people who are in close geographic proximity to a project. I think actually that we do a good job of trying to balance that, but certainly there are many other ways in which we could do outreach or sort through the feedback we're getting that might help us better understand the way our decisions impact people.
Yeah, Sonia.
Along that same line, if we anticipate that a particular community might be more vocal, then we might go there. Whereas another community that might not be more vocal, we may not. And that, that like difference, I think, plays out and as in other organizations that, because there's an expectation there. But both deserve the same level of access to give feedback in the community.
The language we use, you know, we have some really complex technical subjects. And how we translate that into understandable terms and language, independent of specifics of the language, but how translation gets done of a complex technical subject is a, is a piece of that. The other thing that I, I would say about public outreach is there tends to be an agreement bias. If someone agrees with us, why would they show up and tell us anything? They disagree with us. They're motivated to have an amplified voice. And so, I actually think this, this board does a pretty good job to Matt's point about trying to take a step back and go, okay, what and who are we hearing from? And does that represent the community at large? Because ultimately, this board represents the community at large, just not the one particular segment. While we have to hear all of them, we have to balance that too. Agreement biases in your list of biases, but.
We have a cognitive bias training that we do. And there's some recency bias also is a challenging one, like who did I hear from most recently? Well, that must, right? This also shows up a lot for us when we do manager training and they're doing evaluations. Like, what happened six months ago matters as much as last week.
We have a last experience bias, because you don't miss your utility very much. And so, if that was four years ago and it was a good experience, you harbor that good. You retain that good experience feeling. If it was a bad experience, we could have totally changed our processes, but that's what you harbor with you. So, it's a last experience.
Yeah. What about other folks? Is there more on this topic or do you want to go to the next one? Was there something else to add here?
Yeah, I was just going to move on to approving rates and redesign and, and budgeting for customer products and services. You know, that's one that, and as a board, I think that's one of the ones that we struggle with a lot. Because I think we do a, do, do a good job of looking at it through the lenses of a lot of different customers. You know, we look at it through the lens of the people who have a hard time paying the bill. And we look at it through the lens of the, the people who are in for to pay the bill. But we also have to look at longer term. And so, you know, we had, we've been, I've been forced to vote on some things that may hurt a segment of the, of the, our customers that are already disim, disproportionately disenfranchised. But for the good of the the 200,000 customer base and the, what we have to do going forward, I have to do that. And that is, that's one of the ones where it's, you know, I would love to be able to keep the rates low for our, our hardest and lowest income people. And we do as much as we can, but I have to look at the longstanding viability of one of the most important first-world positions that we're in. And so that's a balancing act that is, that one of the struggles that, that I think all of the board members come to when it comes to budgeting and product services. That means, but.
The rates and rate design and the product access and equitable product access to services. Those are two that we really haven't done work within our existing construct, but that's a construct that's going to change significantly in the next five years. I mean, that's one that this policy and how we implement it will have direct applicability to. I just, there's significant work in both of those areas going forward. Because right now, honestly, we have cross subsidies in, in our pricing. Even consumption-based cross subsidies, which seems really odd, but if you are a heavy consumer of electricity, for example, you are subsidizing people who are light users of electricity because we don't fully capture the fixed cost versus the variable cost. Now, that's one that's been in there for a long period of time. And it has nothing to do with the customer's income, by the way. It has all to do, because we've also shown that low consumption doesn't mean low income. But there are, and we're, if we offer multiple products and services, which is our plan, we'll have to, to deal with the dynamics of, of our industry. We have to be able to do that in a way that your choice as a consumer doesn't inequitably impact beauty as a customer and vice versa. So, those two areas, there's going to be a ton of applicability of this kind of policy going forward. The one with all the others too, but I mean, it's like, that, those two are good. There's a significant amount of work.
What else? Anybody else have a little bit? There's a lot of them.
This is grouped together, running for office, proving rates and budget, or proving rates, budgeting, policy governance. So, it's hard to run for office or it's intimidating and to even know how to do it and to follow all of the rules and then do some thing and people and all of that. And then once you do get on the board, for many people, the way they run meetings is not how they interact in the world. Robert's rules of order, the terminology, it's really intimidating when you first start because there's a huge amount of information that you have to use. It's public. So, I, I just feel like it, it really impacts.
So I, I just feel like it, it really impacts who would be willing to do this work, which then impacts the work that we're doing.
Yeah, the voices and. And so I think those are those pieces where it's similar to say, well, there's parts of that that are somewhat out of our control or under you. Right, and then there's organizations that are doing some of that work, whether it's leadership you do in Springfield, right? Trying to get people prepared to do some of this volunteering, at least whether or not running for office, but it's part of those skill sets. But they also then see, so Posidio Wester Community dot is starting a leadership training program for folks in Hispanic and Latino, to prepare them for serving on boards. Why don't they, those spaces? They're looking at some of that and other communities, community groups do that as well. And so that's a space where somehow there are ways to support someone that stuff, right? And as you look at those pieces, because it's a big deal to have a representational board. And the way we run for office in this country makes it really hard for that to be true often for a person. And it just, is that scale of lift is huge.
So as far as giving public outreach and input, you know, a lot of the people who give public out, public input are people who have means, have childcare and have the ability to do it. I was lucky enough to work it through a process on a city board that I was on that actually, rather than soliciting people to, to be on a, a working group, you know, say, hey, who wants to volunteer to be on this working group? They sent out to everybody, ran to a random thing and invited them to be on the working group. Offered to pay for childcare and offered to pay a stipend, basically, so that these people could attend. It was, it was democracy, something, but it was a planning process. It was, it was the city of Eugene in a planning process. And what they got was people who wouldn't normally be in that room and giving input for any number of reasons. One, because they didn't think that they had input to give, which they all did. And then the second thing was a lot, some of them wouldn't be, have the means to do it. They didn't have the time, they didn't have childcare, they didn't have the resources. And so looking at tools like that, when we're looking for, you know, we, we do a customer survey or whatever, but if we're looking for customer input, that, that's a tool that might be out there.
And I think we're seeing more of that, with what they're understanding, that taking the people who show up is a really narrow set of politicians. And so that's basically what does outreach look like? What does representational outreach and really inclusion look like? And I think that we're seeing more and more of that. So we're coming up on time, but do we have any last one that we want to talk? Either of those bullets, or something you look at and you're like, I think we need another balloon instead of commissioner stuff where this really comes to life. What did we miss? I mean, we, you know, we didn't want to, we couldn't put everything, but we tried to be like, we want to touch us on different aspects of the.
Well, I'm doing this currently, but we have in the past, one of the other keys besides setting policy is hiring and firing, just the GM. So I, I hope that, you know, part of the work you're doing with management, because they do a lot more of this work, is, you know, around hiring policies. And I see that on the EWEB staff, so I'm assuming that's what you're doing. You know, eventually that might be a process that we have to deal with. And, you know, what does that recruitment process look like? And how do you make it so that it's fair and equitable?
Really important questions, right? It's like Franklin's lottery.
Well, you win the lottery, right? As I think of like, it's a space, but it is an important job for any board, right? In this space where you're hiring and firing, you're also over to your supervisor. You have one employee, right? You have one wonderful employee, and he has a lot of other employees. But that space where, how you support that person, how you invest in their training, how you invest in that piece, you know, those pieces really do matter. And then that's the same piece that what your teams are doing, because they're working in a very important way. How does that work? Sometimes it also looks at your pipeline for leadership development, right? For organizations that it's really important, that they do internal hires at an executive level, it does affect us, right? And so looking at those questions, I think, are good to ask.
I think there's an opportunity when we do work on things within the organization, to keep in mind its applicability at, at the board level. For, for example, we have, you want to be on a hiring committee, you have to go through an anti-bias training to be on a hiring committee. That's, that's a process that, that could be easily adapted to other levels. So there's a, there's a lot of things that can be.
Is that something we do?
There, I, I think there probably are other places where there are other things we could add to this. I'm, I'm kind of interested in looking at it a little bit longer. But a, a lot of our focus here is on, or again, a lot of our focus is on internal hiring and how we work with each other, which is super important. And I don't want to lose sight of 100,000 people serving. And so, for example, under the EWEB staff, and one of the places where we have a lot of decisions to make, a lot of decisions already here. So on the customer interface, you know, with the type of technology used, the languages that we're using, all the assumptions we're making about people's access to our services and just engaging with us in the various ways they can. So I just want to just keep that front of mind, is that we have so many outward, plus you, so many outward facing policies that we can address and.
Yeah, like, and the most somebody may know about EWEB, which is what it's like to pay a bill. We all know everybody. Right, it was in that space, and one of the things we need to figure out, as we're going through the website, was at a certain point, your website's multilingual, and then at another point, it stops being multilingual. Because the platforms, like, if they're figuring it out, but the platforms don't play together nicely yet. So I can get it in Spanish all this way up to this point, and then no more Spanish.
And I, and I did ask the question when, when we had the training. I said, I went all through the Ukrainian one, got through, it's clear, it's concise, it's fine. And then when you go to this, at the top, pay your bill, you go pay your bill, it's in English. And she said, yeah, the company hasn't gotten to that, that piece in it yet, but it's coming. So that awareness is wonderful. It's amazing. Yes, you can, because it can get you all the way through there. And by the time there's enough context, that you're not losing any place. But that's amazing. That's pretty amazing technology and really quite inclusive. And one more.
There's one more thing I have on the board and commission before we leave, sorry.
Okay, go for it.
And it, and it relates, I think, directly to the metrics on how, how us as a board will figure out if this policy is, is working or is, is being enforced. And I think that, you know, we, we say providing public comment and public outreach. But I think there needs to be internal comment and internal outreach, you know, from the staff up at some point. I mean, I know you do, you do surveys and those types of things, but as a board, we interact with, I mean, we, we have one employee. We interact with some high level managers and team members. But we have no idea of how this policy is working to the, to the person who is mowing the lawn or who is climbing a pole or who is doing all of that. And I don't know how that loops back in. I mean, I, especially since we're not, we're not managing those people, but we also need to know that the policies are coming in. So is there a, is there a mechanism for that in, in the implementation though?
And I think those are great questions to write down as we get to, as you get to that next stage with working with the policy and understanding what your people metrics are or indicators are with it.
And actually, by policy, that's prevented. There's a policy that says your only interaction is through me.
Right.
And so there's, there's actually a barrier, a conflict to what you just described, right?
I'm, I'm not saying, but I, I want you to gather that information and be able to present it to us.
Sure.
That's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I want to, I want to go out and interact with, with the guy mowing the lawn and saying, how is it done? But, but, but I want to make sure that there's, there's a, a mechanism for that to come up and, and for us to see that. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate that.
Right. And I think that, and so if you look, so on page, so page tab five, on page 13, how the state really looks at sort of that role of between policy. And so how that all comes together. And so that's, that state plan is fantastic. We'd encourage you all in your leisure, because it really does go through some of those pieces. It talks about the plan objectives, and it also then breaks it down into strategies, right? So it's policy, plan, strategies, acting, right? And I think that, that's space for you as a board, looking at those and saying, GM, what are, what is your robust plan? What are those metrics you're looking at? What are those data points? What's your benchmarks and time rings, right? Because he's the one you have to supervise. And so that's a nice piece of it. And then I want to point, oh, no, we're pointing, I, we're running out of time. I'll head to other things. Okay, great. And so, uh, looking under the rest of tab one is provided for information. It's a lot of that terminology. And some of the, it says that you're looking at what do these words mean. A lot of those words show up in a lot of this work. You've got them there. Under tab two, you have a nice graphic there talking about the internalized racism, all the structural. Again, these both came from race forward, so that's why they focus on these. You can use some discrimination and think about it more generally as well. The elements of the organizational change is there with the visualizing, organizing, organizationizing and organizing. Just recognizing that, I'm underpaged by the term behind tab two. There's a McKinsey article that I love that talks about what leaders do. And according to them, they're supportive, they operate with results orientation, they see different perspectives and they solve problems actively. And to me, DEI makes all of it better. Right, because if your job is leadership, you have that work. And this is stuff that's going to make that a lot more effective. For three is a ginormous, multi-page glossary of terms. John, it is 15, 16 pages, and it's one of those where as you go through, the words are there, my friend, right? So if we're missing a word, you let me know. But this is a massive amount of that space to say, what does this word mean? I've heard somebody use it. I bet it's on there. Four is going to be the Lake County Equilens Toolkit. And then five is that state plan. So if you didn't want to spend your time by reading this at you, we wanted to remind you that all this is there, and please take a look at it. Please keep thinking and thinking this through. There's a lot of this we threw at you in a very short period of time. Please follow up with us. Both of our cards are in your folder. So you might have something to send us an email, check out, check in, we'll figure these pieces. The point of this really, the irony is, this is an introduction to diversity, right? Like, there's so much. And we talked about a bunch of stuff and we went relatively quickly and it's still two hours for you. And so that space of recognizing that y'all are talking about the policy level in this giant organization, right? This wasn't intended to give you some of that foundational grounding, so you have some of this. So you have some of that understanding of what this is going and how this is going to take. And to start asking those questions, so that as you do the policy work, you're doing it with the DEI lens, that is the hope. Our hope is that we gave you some new tools, so as you think about doing this policy work, you already have some new tools and some questions to say, who aren't we including? Who aren't we prioritizing? So that's that piece. What do you want to say to wrap up? I want to say thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your questions and your consideration. And thank you for doing this work. It's hard and it's going to stay hard. And you're all here to do it and you've all leaned into it. That is commendable. And I will tell you, we don't always see that when we teach. So, thank you.
We appreciate, we'll stick around, but we can end now. So we thank you all very much. Meeting is coming.